Welcome and good evening to the July 3, 2018 City of Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, if we could call the roll please.
Yes, Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, deletions? Mr. Burkett?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Yes, I can.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, consent agenda. Are there any changes, deletions, additions? Mr. Burkett?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Whiting?
Make the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilor Mokel?
Second.
Before we vote then, we will read the consent agenda as stated into the public record. Nate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following are the consent agenda items for July 3, 2018. Item number 4A1 approves the minutes of the June 19, 2018 meeting. Item number 4A2 approves a temporary liquor license for Saint Joaquin and Annie's Annual Julie Fest event being held July 28, 2018. Item 4A3 authorize requested street closures, temporary liquor licenses, in-kind donation, and support of the Rhythm on the Rails event hosted by the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce. Item number 4A4 adopts resolution number R2018-077 and changes the August 7, 2018 meeting date to August 8, 2018, and November 6, 2018 meeting date to November 7, 2018. Item number 4B1 accepts a $2,000 donation from Shakopee Rotary for the purpose of purchasing three benches for installation at Joe Schlepper Stadium. Item number 4C1 adopts resolution number R2018-074, approves preliminary and final plat of Universal Business Center. Item number 4C2 adopts resolution number R2018-076, approves the final plat of Canterbury Park 7th Edition with conditions. Item number 4C3 authorizes the work plan for the EAW update and authorizes staff to consult with WSB and Associates, Inc., D.R. Horton, and their engineers on the processing and completion of the EAW update for the Windermere Development. And item 4D1 declares miscellaneous equipment and property held by the Public Works Department as surplus and authorize proper sale or disposal of the equipment and property.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the table. In a second, we've read the consent agenda into the public record. There is no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make a comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to six, business offer consent, none. Public hearing 7A, vacation of drainage and utility easement in Stagecoach Business Center. And Michael will present, but before we get going, Councilor Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
In a second, by Councilor Lehman?
Second.
Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is open. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the vacation of drainage and utility easements for the Stagecoach Business Center plat. This is an old easement that was associated with Dahlien signs. Vacation, the drainage utility easements will allow a combination of two lots. The applicant intends to dedicate necessary easements within a new plat. So here is the differences. So these are existing three lots. This will be the new proposed two lots. So Dahlien will remain up here with an access point here, and this will be the new property. So the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this, and staff also recommended approval of the proposed vacation. This is for the Universal Stone. They're currently out in the township, and they'll be building a new headquarters on this site.
Great. Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Question I have is if we vacate the current easements on the property, I understand that you're going to get new easements that are needed with the plat that comes in, but if you don't, are we then just left with none? Or is one contingent on the other?
Mayor and Council, one's contingent on the other. We wouldn't allow the new plat unless we... the new plat to get recorded unless we have the other one vacated.
Right, but if they... if nothing is ever recorded there and you have already given up any drainage ways that you might be currently using?
So, Council... Mayor and Council, you can see there's currently already a drainage way, and these are in between the lots are the drainage and utility easements. They're doing a lot recombination to make this one lot, so these utility easements are no longer needed, and they will have one drainage basin up next to Dahlien sign. So by doing one lot, they don't need these, so they're doing a lot recombination.
Well, I... good question, Councilor. I...
So this will be, Mayor and Council, the new lot, and the easements will be in place over here for a new drainage basin that's used by Dahlien and also this property.
Let's start way down here with the legal.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the... one of the conditions of the resolution vacation is that they must dedicate the easements in the proposed plat, so this resolution won't get recorded until the plat gets recorded.
There it is.
It'll all be done simultaneously and...
There's the tie. Councilor Luce?
Oh, I just was...
Okay. Further questions? Further questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing with the applicant. Are there representatives who'd like to come forward and make comment on this? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lance Frost. I'm a land surveyor with Stonerick Engineering, and I'm representing the applicant. I think he covered everything. I'm just available. I answer questions. Do you have any?
Questions of the applicant? Are there representatives? If not, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. If anybody else would like to come... make comment in regard to this? Councilor Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Councilor Mokel?
Make a motion to approve resolution number R2018-073.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, public hearing 7B, redevelopment TIF plan for Riverfront Bluff District. Councilor Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce to open the public hearing. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now open, and Michael will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have our legal representatives and our financial representatives here tonight. Paul Steinman from Springstead is here, and we'll run through kind of the overview of the TIF proposal, TIF plan that they prepared, and we also have Julie Eddington here from Kennedy and Graven, who's been doing all the legal work on this. So I will let Paul go first, and then we have a brief presentation on the project, and the developers also here.
Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Try to keep this short. So this is information related to the public hearing on tax increment redevelopment district number 19. So I'll provide just a little bit of an overview of what we're going to discuss, a very brief overview of tax increment financing. You folks are probably familiar with almost all of it. A couple of you could probably give this presentation as well. Outline the development scenario that you have before you, a look at the project boundaries, some of the reasons why the district was qualified as a redevelopment district, the development assumptions, and some of our TIF projections, budget authority, and the next steps you'll be taking. So TIF is, as you are mostly aware, a method of capturing tax base that results from new development and redirecting the taxes generated back into the development to assist that development. So it captures new incremental taxes to pay for public improvements that are related to the development of the site. The... there's a fixed term for capture. In this case, it'll be a 25-year tax increment district, and then the new development is then added to the overall city's tax base at the end of that 25 years. These are typical eligible costs, most of which are being proposed to be reimbursed to this developer: public improvements, land acquisition, soil correction, site prep, demolition, relocation, financing fees, and administrative costs that come to the city to administer the district. These are some public improvement costs that are allowed: streets and roads, utilities, bridges, et cetera, parking, sideways walkways, soft costs, related costs.
Excuse me. When you say soft costs, what are you...
Finance... financing costs, other engineering costs, architectural costs related to the public improvements.
Okay, when you say financing costs, you're not referring to interest, or are you?
Yes, I am referring to interest. Mr. Mayor, council member? Yep, interest costs as well. These are public improvement costs that aren't allowed. It used to be allowed many years ago. Some of us remember that. Public buildings like city centers, city halls, even public safety, parks, buildings, administration costs that are beyond the 10% of TIF collections. Those are all costs that are not allowed to be paid for with tax increment. There's a couple different ways to finance project costs. This is important because we'll... the way that is being proposed on this development is pay-as-you-go. That's the first bullet here. So the pay-as-you-go process of... is basically a reimbursement to the developer. So the developer pays for all of the improvements themselves, and they receive a reimbursement from tax increment generated, and that reimbursement is limited only to the amount of TIF that is generated. And that's the way that is being proposed this evening on this project. There's also general obligation tax increment bonds. That is where tax increment pays... you could sell bonds in the event the tax increment would pay at least 20% of the debt service costs, and you have an obligation to levy for debt issue, of course, because it's secured by your general obligation, and oftentimes you'll have a minimum assessment agreement which may result in taxable bonds. We may talk about some of that as we go forth on a different project. This is the project. So the developer's proposing redeveloping the site, this site just north of downtown, and into a new apartment building. The buildings are proposed to contain 126 market rate apartments, 3,500 square feet of restaurant space on the main floor, and 180 units of underground parking. And additionally, the developer will be clearing the site and taking care of site costs related to the redevelopment in that manner. The boundaries of the proposed TIF district number 19. And it's important to note here, there are several different types of tax increment district. There's a housing tax increment district and a redevelopment tax increment district. So a common question here would be, why isn't this a housing tax increment district? A housing TIF district is to help subsidize affordable housing units. These are market rate housing units. A redevelopment TIF district is one that meets the qualifications as we set forth here. It has a number of parcels that are occupied in the TIF district already. At least 50% of the buildings have to be deemed structurally substandard, and that's a definition that's in the statute. The property within this district was inspected, and it was determined to qualify as a redevelopment tax increment district. Redevelopment TIF districts allow for the use of 25% of TIF funds to be spent outside of the tax increment district, so not just inside the boundaries of this district, but there's some flexibility to spend the TIF that is generated here outside of the TIF district with ultimately, however, with 90% of the TIF revenue having to be used to reimburse the cost of correcting the conditions that allowed this TIF district to be put in place in the first place. That's some sausage making in tax increment, but important here. And the administrative expenses of the city are eligible expenditures under this 90% test, the second bullet there. This redevelopment TIF district is proposed to be 25 years from receipt of first increment. These are the primary development assumptions. Again, 126 market rate apartment units, 3,500 square feet of restaurant space on the main floor, 180 units of underground parking. Our assumptions for the tax increment analysis, $150,000 per unit market value for the apartments, and $150 per square foot market value restaurant. Those assumptions came from some other projects, similar projects that we've been working on, and are by any means conservative. Also conservative... also, we conservatively estimated there would be no market value inflation at all through the 25-year... 25 years of this tax increment district. We assume that you would retain all 10% for administrative purposes. The frozen TIF, our base TIF tax rate is 130.1987, today's total tax rate, and the first receipt of increment will be delayed until 2021, when most of the value will be able to be captured. Final receipt in 2046. That's 26 total receipts of tax increment.
Councilor Luce? Just for the audience, the reasoning for the delay is pretty much the completion of the project, correct? That's when they would be taxed.
Mr. Mayor, council member, so the project will be constructed in 2019. If you... if you know... if you remember how it works in Minnesota, it's constructed in 2019, assessed in 2020, for pay 2021, and so we time the district with the payment of that first increment to maximize the tax increment.
The first full value...
Yeah, I just wanted the audience to be aware of why the timed delay was...
Yep.
Excellent.
Good. Here's the budget that's being proposed in the tax increment plan. Developer reimbursable eligible costs of a little over $2.8 million. Excuse me. City land acquisition via interfund loan repayment at $725,000. The developer has interest payments associated with the $2.8 million in the amount of about $2.7 million. The city also will have interest payments to itself on the $725,000 interfund loan in the amount of about $450,000. Your administrative expenses, the 10% that you'll collect in increment will equal $779,000, and other TIF eligible expenditures, basically for rounding purposes, $258,000, $689... $258,000 plus, for a total budget of about $7.8 million. And the tax increment estimated to be generated through the 26 years of collection, $7 million, almost $7.8 million. So those two numbers match. Here are the terms of the development agreement being proposed, please.
Councilor Luce?
Yep.
That increase... that is the increase in property tax that you're fading, correct? One slide back. That $7797, that is what it's expected to increase?
Mr. Mayor, council member, that is the increment tax increment, and that is all based upon the increase in market value, correct?
Over the term, but that's over and above what's being paid today.
That is over and above the base which is being paid today, correct?
Letting make sure the audience know. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, currently, the one parcel is owned by the city, so it's not paying taxes. And does the city own the house? The... on Scott Street, Scott and First? So that was a recent acquire. Is that... is there taxes generated from that property, being that the city owns it? So did we go from prior to the city purchasing that property, or currently?
Council member... our mayor and council member, so the property you recently purchased, so it probably hasn't gone... it hasn't carried a tax exempt value yet. Once it has a tax exempt value, there's a process of bringing it back in at the tax exempt value. Julie can add to this. Darren could add to this.
Let's defer to Darren here.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, excuse me. I believe in discussions with Julie Eddington, our legal counsel, is that that property, any property that the city owns, the county does have to assign a value to it? So it would kind of come up to that base level, so it would have an... it would have a taxable value that would pay taxes on, and that would be not within the tax increment piece of that. So if the city owns something, it's going to... the county's going to go back and assign a value to that property.
Okay, and then is the city going to pay itself the tax result on it?
It would come off the base.
Okay.
The new property owner would pay those taxes, and those taxes then would get distributed to the right taxing authorities, to the city, county, school district.
Zero, but we assign the value, and that gets paid. Basically, the assigned value is what it paid before the city purchased it.
Mayor, can I try... can I try this a different way? What's the total value of the... all the properties combined today?
Today's total value is... Mr. Mayor, council member, total base estimated market value is $791,200. So that will be the base value through 25 years. The estimated increase in value is
So of the 800,000 current value at a 130% tax, although we're not capturing the county and the school district on the prior value...
And that's the value. That's not tax capacity, though, either.
I asked what the value was, and then I said you take the 130% taxation, which is all three entities combined.
So the... Mr. Mayor, counselor, the base value is $791,200. That equals a total net tax capacity of, call it 10,000, it's 9949. It's 10,000 times the current tax capacity rate of 130% is $13,000, and that is what will continue to be distributed to the entities, school district, county, and city, and a couple other.
Okay, continue.
Good. So the development agreement terms. The development agreement anticipates reimbursing the developer for a little over $2.8 million, as shown here, in eligible site improvements, infrastructure, contamination remediation, and other TIF eligible expenses, and this would be proposed to be done on a pay-as-you-go basis, so annually from tax increment as it is received. Reimbursement of the TIF note will occur from 79.5% of the captured increment, net of the 10% administrative retainage. So in other words, the developer... so first, you have 100% of increment. You take your 10% first from the 90% that is left. take your ten percent first from the ninety percent that is left. The, the developer is proposed to receive seventy-nine point five percent. And you'll see where the rest comes, the rest comes to repay the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar internal interfund loan. So the city doesn't have any obligation in this paygo to satisfy any shortfall in any event that the TIF revenue is less than projected. So you're only obligated to pay what is collected in, in TIF after your ten percent. The developer will also receive reimbursement for interest costs incurred on their funding at a rate of five percent annually. And again, the reimbursement is scheduled to occur 2021 through 2046.
Paul.
Mister Mayor.
Talking about the, the term and the years, and then you, you run your calculations of the value over that time and take out the increment against the, the note of two point eight million. Is the, the dollar amount of the two point eight really the kingpin? If you, you said that you offered no market value inflation for the property. We, we know over this term, there'll be some inflation like anything else, appreciation or depreciation depending on the economy. But if it appreciated more, you know, with market value inflation, and they, the increment would increase based off that, and then pay down that two point eight million faster, then the increment, the TIF aspect could go away at a sooner date. It doesn't have to go to term because it's set by the dollar amount, is that correct?
Absolutely correct, Mister Mayor. Yep.
Counselor Lewis?
Well, and the reason that you don't put that in there, because you can foresee the valuation increases, you have to go with the numbers that are solid today, correct?
Mister Mayor, counselor, sometimes we use a one percent inflator, I mean, but, but we like to use a zero percent.
Conservative.
To be very conservative.
Follow-up. The five percent interest rate, who sets that?
So the, the five percent, counselor, is negotiated with the developer. It's typically tied to a rate that is considered to be a rate that the developer is borrowing the funds at, because remember, the developer is borrowing two point eight million dollars to do all of this work in advance of being repaid at maybe around a five percent rate. So therefore, in order for the developer to be whole at the end of twenty-five years, they would have to achieve a five percent return from the paygo note.
Well, but if he pulls in a loan at four percent, capturing one percent on two point eight million, is there some way to adjust that? I mean, that, that doesn't seem right. I mean, if we're setting it at five, we should be knowing that we're paying five.
Mister Mayor, counselor, A, he's never getting a loan for four percent today. And B, typically when it's set, it's set. In, in all likelihood, it's greater than five percent. In all likelihood, what he's paying is greater than five percent. But, but yeah, he can refinance, he can take equity out, they, they can do a number of things in this project, but it won't impact the rate on the paygo note. It's negotiated upfront and, and done.
More, last, continue?
All right. This is the city side of the deal, so the city's capturing some increment to reimburse itself for the cost of purchasing the property. And the total amount of that acquisition is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the city gets twenty and a half percent of the increment after it takes its ten percent off of the top. And the city reimburses itself for interest costs incurred on the funding at the rate of four percent, which leads to a great question, and the answer is because four percent is the maximum that the state, that state statute allows for interfund loans at the current time. In fact, in my life, I don't think I've seen it higher than four percent, so I don't know if it ever changes, but.
Just down to that one percent again.
And again, your reimbursement is scheduled to occur simultaneously with the developer's reimbursement through 2046. And these are the following two step, the, the next steps in this process to adopt the resolution approving the TIF plan as described in one, and secondly, to adopt the resolution approving the development agreement after, I assume after your bond counsel will discuss that issue. I'm happy to take questions.
More questions? Counselor Lehman?
So does this proposal, it captures the county's dollars and the school district's dollars? Hundred percent?
Mister Mayor, counselor, yes. The, on the incremental new value created, yes.
And when you, you said thirteen hundred on a total on the current properties, if you break that down, you know, it's roughly four hundred, four hundred and four hundred, granted, the school's probably a little bit higher than the city and county. So basically, all these properties combined today are paying roughly four hundred in city taxes, four hundred in county taxes. And, and what's being proposed is roughly three hundred and twenty-five people, and I used a hundred and twenty-five times two point five per unit, which is a state number. Do you imagine any of these folks will utilize school services, city services, or county services? And who's supposed to pay for that if there's no tax revenue coming from the proposal to offset that cost?
Mayor, counselor Lehman, I feel like, I feel deja vu, because we've had this discussion many times.
We have.
And the answer is that the remaining taxpayers in your city pick up the costs that are not borne by this project because it is in a tax increment financing district.
And that applies the same with the school district and the county?
Correct. For those folks that are inside of your city, well, yes. School district and county as well.
And the county as well, because it's hundred percent.
Yes.
Okay.
We've also had the school super, interim school superintendent here before this board mentioning that the, the impact to them is minimal because about seventy-nine or seventy-eight percent of their funding comes directly from the state. And I think your assumption about how many per?
Two point five per unit.
Yeah, I think in today's world, in layout of apartment buildings, that number is not what, that's a old school, or, that's a single-family home situation.
That's, that's the current state number, and it can, that can be debated, but it's not my number, so.
That's fine.
I'm sure there's probably more in some and less in others, and they come up with some average.
In a one-bedroom, I don't think you'd get there, but that's fine. Do you have more?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
So it's market rate, it's being called market rate, but in reality, it's, it's being subsidized, and I'm kind of trying to figure out how the two words can be in the same sentence.
Counselor, so the market rate refers to the rent that they're asking, the rent, rental revenues that they're receiving, their units that rent at a rate based, that is based upon what the market pays. The subsidy, though, is going to pay for the extraordinary costs of redeveloping a site that has buildings on it, that needs public infrastructure, that has substandard buildings on it, so.
Extraordinary cost. Usually when a development comes before us, we see roads and sewers and water lines and infrastructure as part of the development. And I understand there's additional costs in this with cleanup, ground content, soil contamination, demolition of buildings, these types of costs. But a lot of what you listed as cost are normal cost. Whether it's a sidewalk that you're putting in on a normal development or a roadway to access it. So I guess I'm trying to understand how regular, average, pay-for-itself development sees these costs as part of the development, where these types of developments, they're extraordinary.
Well, they, counselor, they simply see them as the state law defines them as eligible tax increment costs.
Counselor Whiting?
I'm not sure if Mister Kurski took down your presentation, but I think on page three or four of your presentation, it talked about what the TIF is gonna pay for, and, sorry, you don't have to pull it down.
It's in the next presentation, counselor.
But, but this is city-owned property now, because we purchased the property. We know it's contaminated, so the, the increment that the developer is gonna have to borrow for is gonna be paying for cleaning up that site. And it's gonna pay the city back for purchasing the property and pay the city back for demolishing the buildings that are on it. It's gonna pay the city back for all the developmental costs of building that, putting that infrastructure in. So to me, this TIF district pays us back for our investment in that property, would you say that's correct?
Those facts seem to be correct as to what I had shown in the budget, so. What the developer is requesting.
Other questions of?
Have one more.
Yeah. Financial guy?
Yeah, this is probably an off-the-wall question, but if I recall, you showed us it was roughly two point seven or two point eight million dollars worth of improvements. And then you showed us that it was like two point seven million dollars worth of interest. Wouldn't it save everybody a whole lot of money if the city put two point seven into the project upfront, didn't pay any interest cost, and collected the remaining taxation over the twenty-five years?
Counselor, again, deja vu. Yes, there, there still would be a cost if the city put the money in upfront, though. I mean, otherwise, you'd invest that money, and there would be interest that you would have gained on that money, so. It's, interest is just a part of the development world, so.
And I understand that when you have a thirty-year mortgage on a house, that most of your payments are going to the interest.
Well, same thing. Counselor Lewis?
Well, I think where Counselor Lehman was going is, part of this, the way you're saying to do it, keeps it clean. The city's involvement is basically nil, to the point of, we have very little skin in the game, other than, I believe it's eight hundred thousand, which in this project of eighteen million is pretty minor. Keeps it clean, we, we're not doing interfund loans and all whatever razzmatazz, the interest rate, I believe we would, you know, if we charged the four percent that we're allowed, we might gain a little bit, but all the bookkeeping and all that would probably gobble that up. I'm not crazy about these TIF districts, because I, I, as Counselor Lehman said, the school district does without, and the county does without, and, you know, the city does without any excess, you know, that would come forward. But the way things are going today, the developers have a somewhat of a stranglehold on the city, because if you want development, you're gonna pay for it, and, you know, it's just the, the going theme right now, and there's no way to get around it unless you got bare farmland. Then, then they gotta pony up on their own, but, you know, something like this, where you're taking down buildings, and we got number of contaminations from oil and dry cleaning chemicals, and found a garbage pit that, you know, the city probably used itself back when. Could be a sweeping pit, I don't know, I know there was a few of them around town. So I'm just, just trying to get some information out there for the public, so they understand where this all comes down to. We're, we're stuck, if we want this property developed, we don't have much of any choice but to agree to this, because otherwise, it's gonna sit there forever. I don't totally agree with the way the city went about it by purchasing it without using the, the normal standards, because I think we paid too much for the property, but, you know, that's, that's over with and done, that's nothing I can do about. But at this point, this is the way it happens today in this world, and, you know, it's either sitting there vacant, or we're gonna do something with it and increase the value of our city and, you know, hopefully make the downtown look better. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for the, Paul Simon? Counselor Lehman?
I wasn't for the...
Okay. So if there's no further questions for Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, I'll stick around.
Michael, do you have any follow-up comments?
Mayor and council, I just saw we go over the presentation we saw last time, just so the public can see what the project is, so. It's gone, companies responded to our requests for proposals, they've been working on these designs for a while, it's a hundred and twenty-five units of housing, underground parking and a restaurant location on the river. This is the proposed site plan layout. Does have underground parking. And as you mentioned, the restaurant is on the first floor overlooking the river, the building is very oriented towards the river, and on First Avenue would have townhouses. These are small units for the most part, you can see there are a few two-bedrooms, but they're mostly one-bedroom and alcove units, which are, growing up, we called those studios. They will have some one-bedroom loft units, which are a little unusual in this market. These are the proposed elevations, this, again, it's very oriented towards the pedestrian at the street level. And here's a proposed rendering, this is the entrance on Levy Drive. And this is the view looking towards the restaurant from the riverfront. And these are the proposed more townhouse-style units that would face First Avenue. And rendering of the project in place on the river bluff. So again, this is a very unusual site, you can see right now, the city road is not in right-of-way, so as part of this project, you can see there's, next to the existing Pass House, there's a parcel owned by the city, as part of this, they will be realigning Levy Drive and Scott Street to meet at a ninety-degree angle, and demolishing these properties. Again, we discussed this last time, but there is a large trash pit and bedrock on the property. So the EDA would get back, the property acquisition costs, it's ten percent admin fee interest on the note, the developer would be able to recover, so the two point eight million is the maximum they're allowed to recover, they have to actually come back and justify those expenses for actually spending that money. So they would do the street improvements around the project on Levy Drive, Scott, and Atwood Street. Utility relocations, we met this morning, this will actually improve significantly, the current utilities in the area, Spuck is gonna be adding several circuits that the developer's gonna be sharing that cost. Currently, their power lines run along the bluff, they'll all be relocated into Duck Bank that'll run along Levy Drive as that road gets reconstructed, so those will come out, and then no longer be aerial lines in this area. We met with the gas company, they currently have metal pipe, which is not something they like anymore, they'll be tearing all of their gas pipe out and replacing it with plastic as part of this project. And then, excuse me, Comcast has a lot of issues in this area as part of this, they're gonna be working on a major upgrade fiber optics that'll run along potentially some city right-of-way along the riverfront and come up underground through this area, all fiber optic, then fiber optic to this building, that's part of their long-range upgrade for the areas to go to straight fiber optic instead of copper wire. So again, the developer will be paying a lot of those costs as part of this project. Site remediation, test pits were dug last Friday, there's fifty years of materials, and they found brick, floor tile, fractured stone, furniture, wire. They're currently testing those materials, we'll find out next week whether there is some asbestos that's mixed in. That pit opened in the late eighteen nineties and was closed sometime in the nineteen fifties, so there's a lot of waste that's been dumped in there over the years, and as you saw in the geotechnical report, it's anywhere from nine feet to fifteen feet deep. As part of this, as part of the utility relocation, they're gonna have to provide a stable base, working with the utilities for them to lay that new duck bank, so there's a lot of trash that will have to be removed even in the street, because that duck bank will be located in the city right-of-way, along with the new water line. They're looping the water line around the site, because right now, there is not currently a loop, and they don't really wanna cut into First Avenue, which is a county road. So there's a lot of utility improvements that will benefit the area, especially RAR, because now we'll have redundant utilities to that site. There's bedrock, right below the slab of doggy doos, they hit bedrock, that will be removed, they will be remediating the existing buildings and doing the demolition, and also doing new sidewalks and streetscaping around the products, projects. So that's streetscaping basically on three sides, so it'll be on First Avenue, Scott Street, and Levy Drive, and part of Atwood. So it's a pretty significant amount of new upgrades to the public improvements.
Excellent. Questions on staff? Counselor Lewis?
Definition of a loft unit.
A loft unit? The developers here, he can give you a better idea, but it's basically a two-level unit in one tall space. So you'll have your kitchen, living space kind of on the first level, and then your full bath and a bedroom on the second level.
Follow? Townhouses that are facing First Avenue, is there a possibility they're designed so that, say in the future, they wanted to use the Block III and IV model of retail? Could they be remodeled to that?
We can ask the developer on that. He's here.
Second one. And then the redundant utilities to RAR, is that some financial benefit to them? Are they going to see lower costs of any kind?
Mayor and Council, I don't believe they'll see any lower costs, but I think they'll see the redundancy. It was surprising to hear those wires have been on the bluff, I think, since long before the city was the utility owner, and it's not the best to have power lines at the top of the bluff and the trees. So by doing this, Spuck is going to be adding extra circuits in the area, so that duck bank will have extra capacity, because they said down the road, they will not have to pull overhead wires to this area anymore. They've been able to pull new wires through a new duck bank, so they're going to have at least two empty circuits, three phases that they'll be able to pull if it's ever needed on the other side.
So it'll stay on the north side. It won't be transferred to the south side by RAR? Michael?
Mayor and Council, correct. It's going to, RAR has some significant facilities on that side of the road, and they're looking at future redevelopment in there. They want to make sure that they don't have to ever bust open a brand-new road. So Spuck is upgrading the water line. There's also an old, this is the original town site of Shakopee, so all the utilities, including the gas line, are pretty old. And so as part of this, all the utilities are going to be upgraded.
Follow-up?
So in the future, with RAR, if they do expand, the power's going to be there already for them, so they're not, that's one thing they can cross off their list that they don't have to worry about. And the gas will be there.
Mayor and Council, we, a long meeting with utilities today, but Center Point Energy is upgrading all their facilities to serve any other needs there, so we don't have to bust the road open. We are going to be looping, I think on three or four sides of this project, a new water line. And again, Comcast will be bringing a brand-new fiber line up into this area that doesn't exist. This is an underserved area because of bedrock and other issues, and Comcast is all aerial on copper wire.
And this is an older, older part of town. I mean, what RAR took out was...
Very old.
Very old and, you know, I don't want to say ghetto, but it was, some people could classify it as that.
All right. Other questions on staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
The developer like to come forward and make comment? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Dan Hebert, Gone Companies, 23977 Hawthorne Avenue North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. So, Mike, great question about Lot 3 and 4. You know, I think, suppose as people were to sell off their property, we see that rowhouse kind of loft just being, it could be retail. I guess we'd be stretching the downtown further west, which is, which is a good thing. So if not retail, it would just be rowhouses, probably, I would think.
Are those units, those townhouse units, going to be owned? They're not going to be rented?
They are going to be rented.
Oh.
Yeah. So we, we wanted to create some vertical rise to the, to the, to the street up front, so that's why we went two-level. And so instead of just going to two-story, we just did a loft, so it gives you about a 20-foot clear height.
Question on the 125 units, 126 units. Had a question on the amount of occupancy per unit. The state uses, for single-family homes, I believe, a 2.25 or 2.5. Is that a, tell me about that number and how it would relate to this development.
Well, it's going to all be dependent upon your unit mix, you know, and, you know, alcoves are going to be, you know, one person, maybe two people. So, you know, depending upon what we totally come up with, once we do a full market study, that's going to dictate a little bit more of, of the mix of units and how big the units will be. Does that answer your question? Probably not.
And alcove is like a new word for what previously was called a studio.
Yeah, so if you can imagine alcove, it would just have partition walls that would separate off the sleeping area with no door, for example.
Other questions of the developer? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment in regard to this proposal? This is a public hearing. Make comment on this? Seeing none? Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Move forward, and we can, Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the... Modify and redevelopment plan for Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One and a tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing, the redevelopment of District Number 19 for the Riverfront Bluff Redevelopment Project. It's Resolution Number R2018-079.
Okay. Counselor Mokel?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, as I stated before, I'm not crazy about the TIFs. But if we're going to do anything with this property, with the contamination and the garbage pit and the very substandard buildings that are there, I hate to say it, but I think it's the only, in today's market, it's the only way we can go, because we're not going to get a developer to come in here with the situations that are going around the area that, you know, developers, I guess, I don't want to knock developers, but they've got the upper hand right now. And if we want something done, we got to go with it, so I just wanted to make that known to people.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I disagree that developers have the city over a barrel in any development. Actually, I think Shakopee's history shows that Shakopee's been the place that they want to develop at. I do recognize this particular project has its unique issues. And I can respect the fact that the city wants to help out to get through them issues. And if anything, that's probably what a TIF district was really designed for. I actually like this project. The only hurdle that I have is that the school, the city, and the county are going to 100% pay back into the project, and there's nothing for any entity for any services. And in fact, it's subsidized, as Mr. Steinman pointed out. Early on in this process, I did talk with staff and said that, you know, my threshold was trying to get some kind of dollars towards services, and we just weren't successful. And that's unfortunate, because I have no problem with the rest of the project.
Counselor Whiting?
You know, we, last Tuesday night, we had a workshop on our planning 2040 plan. Unfortunately, Counselor Lehman couldn't make it, but one of the ideas was to get back, you know, rediscover the river. And this site has one of the best views of the river in the area that can be developed. And with that, the potential for other sites to, to redevelop on their own and to upgrade on their own, I think, is, has a lot of, has a lot of potential. So with more people, there's going to be some more activity downtown, more businesses making a little money. We've talked for years about enhancing our downtown, and I think adding people is one of the, one of the avenues to go. So I like this project, and I support it, obviously.
Thank you. Counselor Mokel?
I also wanted to add that, you know, our downtown businesses, this is the one thing that they have been asking us for more foot traffic, and this is what is going to drive some of that foot traffic, is having some of these developments in the downtown. I think the restaurant is a great addition, and, and I like the separate parking area for that, as well as the underground garage. So I, I'm also in support of this project.
Counselor Luce?
I would have to dispute a little bit of what Counselor Whiting said, that this is possibly the premier site. I believe it is the premier site.
I didn't want to discount anybody.
It's, if you're into wildlife and wetlands, you have the perfect view of a, of a state or federal, I can't remember which it is, refuge, and the bend in the river, it all, I mean, the people are going to flock to that side of that building to rent. And as far as Counselor Lehman's problem with not paying for services, any future tax increases, if I'm not mistaken, they come back to us, don't they? Or do they just pay off?
Any referendums?
They go back toward the project cost.
They just pay it off quicker.
Right.
Yeah? Okay. So either way...
In 2046, we'll collect full taxes on the property. I won't be here, but...
If their valuation increases between now and then, their taxes are going to go up, which will pay down their note quicker, which could bring that 2020, 2046...
Down to 20 years instead of 25.
Well.
Five years less.
We, you know, we've had, I don't know, we, I think we've had 19 TIF districts in our community. None of them have failed. Many of them have actually outperformed to pay down their TIF dollar maximum faster and sooner. I don't believe any of them have, is the pay-as-you-go has negatively impacted our community in any way. And actually, years ago, I believe, well, it pays for public infrastructure, and actually, years ago, under the old school, I believe that TIF paid for a water tower in our community and also paid for about 60% of the Upper Valley Drainage Way, which was an important aspect of our community. I believe redevelopment is, is very difficult and inherently more risky because of many factors. This one has a dump on it. It has bedrock right there. How else would this get redeveloped? I believe this is paramount to continue, to, to the continued revitalization of our downtown area, and actually, the expansion, and so this is not, you know, considered right in the core downtown. This development is going to put additional tax capacity on the books. I understand that we're using tax increment financing for this, but actually, we're putting it back on at a significantly higher, higher value and the best use of land, considering where it is. Well, you know, you mentioned the taxes of $400 or whatever it is for the site. Redevelopment is costly because of a host of factors, site prep, infrastructure. Actually, the land housed different uses, need to be configured in a different way. These are investments for our community for a long term. I strongly believe it's worth the investment for our community and our downtown area. It's important to have a opportunity to bring residents into our community in downtown, walkable, livable, and increase the vitality of our community. And as Counselor Whiting said, the, you know, we've been working on the envisioned draft comp plan. Downtown, continued revitalization of downtown are some of those biggest points in there. We all have a hand in this, and actually, I pulled out the survey we did about a year, year and a half ago, and actually downtown and helping downtown was part of that survey. I believe the future is before us here, and I wouldn't want to, regardless of the outcome of the vote, I'd like to thank the developer. I'd like to thank Paul and Springstead and their team for putting the numbers together. And I'd like to actually thank staff. And Michael, you've worked long and hard piecing these pieces of property together. You took a business and re, and developed a site out on our west end. Amazing piece of property here that, of developmental, redevelopment work, that, thank you for that. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead then to recess for our EDA meeting tonight. So I will take a motion.
Make a motion to recess to our Economic Development Authority meeting.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We stand in recess for the EDA. Mr. President?
We'll call the EDA to order for July 3rd, when I read in tonight, folks. Please note to roll. Approve of the agenda. Everybody should have one in front of you. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the agenda as stated.
Your second?
Second.
Second to motion, Mr. Luce. Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda has the bills and the minutes. Any questions on the bills and the minutes? Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Luce. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. General business for a purchase agreement for 126 Atwood Street. Be Mr. Kersky.
Mr. President and board members, this is the acquisition of the last property for the River Bluff TIF. If you remember, this was on an earlier agenda. The family did get their own appraiser. We had our appraiser go back, and this was kind of the compromise appraiser. The appraisal had been done about six months ago, so the markets changed considerably in that six months, so the price had gone up.
Questions of staff? Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-010 for purchase agreement of 250, 75,000, which consists of 250,000 for the property and 25,000 for the relocation assistance.
Second by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? One question that I had, this is acceptable for both the property owner and the city?
Yes, sir.
Any other question, Mr. Luce?
I'm just glad that the property owner pushed a little bit for reevaluation, and he got a little extra. I think they deserve it, and, you know, it's a fair price on all sides, so I think it's a good deal.
Question, Mr.?
We didn't pay too much for this one?
Question for Mr. Kersky is...
Yes, sir.
The increase in the price of this property that's in the TIF land acquisition reimbursement.
Mayor, I mean, Mr. President, that's correct. So any extra costs we have, you'll be seeing, hopefully, the next meeting, which I would ask, I don't think it's on the agenda, to continue this meeting when you're finished here tonight till the 20, till the 17th, because we have some additional items. But you'll be seeing an item, hopefully, on the 17th, that a lot of additional funds will be coming back to the EDA, and any shortfall, whether it's 25 or 30,000 dollars, can be made up out of there.
Okay, but specifically to answer my question?
We, we have $775,000 budgeted. We're probably 20 or 25,000 dollars off because of the increase in this property.
Okay, my, my question was, and maybe Mr. Steinman can answer it, is when the numbers were ran for the TIF district on the proposal that includes the property we're talking about now, the value that we paid, the amount that we paid for that property may not have been accurate. So the question is simply, is 100% of the cost of the acquisition of this property, regardless of the price, included in the TIF reimbursement from the project?
Does the 725,000 include this? Is that your question?
Yes. And even if it doesn't include it, because the prior price of this property was less, would it still be 100% reimbursable from the TIF district?
Yes.
Okay. Are you guys both nodding your heads? Let the record reflect that, then. Mr. Luce?
Mr. President, let me just say, so the, what you set tonight is the 2.8 million as kind of the financial cap. Same as Trina's, we, it's a gross number, and so we will come back to you. So as the developer moves forward and does their site exploration and works with all the utilities, we'll come back with basically a term sheet that will have our side, their side, so you'll know exactly where all the money's going.
Okay. Mr. Luce?
Lord Member Mars made a comment about it, if I thought we paid, overpaid for this price, for this piece of property. I think the price that we paid...
I think the price that we paid reflects the overage that we paid for the other properties so that it's fair across the board.
Well, just a minute ago, Councilor, you said that we overpaid. I'm doing some quick math here and in regard to the three parcels, in total, we, under my math, we paid seven seventy-five.
That's correct.
For all those and at one time, you, just a minute ago, you said you overpaid for a previous parcel, but you're glad this site is getting more. So I just want to make sure.
Said it's a level playing field, the percentages above normal is across the board. I think we paid too much for everything, if that's the word you're looking for.
Well, that's fine.
It's beside the point. Any more discussion on the topic in front of us? Did we have a motion? Yep.
Yep.
Second. Mokel and Luce? I wrote it down, sorry. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. For B, adoption of TIF plan for Riverfront Bluff redevelopment district. I'm not sure that we have to rehash the whole issue again, but if there's any new questions that you might have thought of, our staff and the experts are still here. Mr. Whiting?
And Mr. President, I will, the total taxes paid right now are just over thirteen thousand dollars a year to the varying districts.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number E 2018-012, a TIF district plan for the Riverfront Bluff District. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Luce. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Passes four to one. Four C. Approval of contract for private development between EDA and Gawn LLC. Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve, for approval of the private development agreement between, I probably slaughtered the name, Gawn?
Gawn.
Gawn, Shakopee LLC and the EDA for the redevelopment of the River Bluff, resolution number E 2018-011.
Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer second to that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? The one question that I had on the developer's agreement, if I read into that correctly, if there's a default on behalf of the developer, then the city's just S.O.L. at that point? How does that, how does that work?
Councilmember, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
If there's a default on behalf of the developer, the city's then just?
Why we have our attorney?
We've got Julie up here.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Julie Eddington, I'm an attorney with Kennedy and Graven. I represent the city and the EDA as their bond counsel and tax increment counsel. With respect to the contract, so we'll enter the contract and yes, if they don't perform, if they don't close for some reason, there's a default and we'll call a default and perhaps we can negotiate some settlement. But once they've closed on the property and they have financing, which is going to happen relatively soon, they'll have bank financing, the bank will want them to do this, so they'll be very motivated to get the project done. So I think it's a very short period of time that a default like you're talking about would happen.
Well, couldn't that default happen anytime over the course of twenty-five years if society decides they don't want to rent apartments or something?
So the way the contract works is that their main obligations under the agreement are to build what they've said they're going to build and that will happen in the next three years. Once that's over, the majority of their obligations under this contract are done and we simply have a few extra things they want, that we want them to do, like keep their property insured, keep it well maintained. Those kinds of covenants will also be in the bank documents, so the bank will also be watching over this, you know, project. So I think, you know, the first couple of years are when something could possibly go wrong, but once they get their bank financing and they start construction, for example, if there's a fire or something tragic happens with the building, they've got insurance and they can reconstruct what they've lost. So I think it's a limited period of time where there could be a default where the city would not get repaid for their property and the other items that they need to be repaid for, administrative costs, for example.
Okay. Mr. Luce?
Yeah, and if they would default on their loan, the bank takes over the management of the building until they can resell it, so basically, things go on as normal, correct?
Correct. And if there's a default in the middle of construction, oftentimes, the bank will find someone else to finish the project.
And just for the record, I'm not implying that there's anything wrong with this applicant. I apologize if it came out that way, that's not my intention. My intention is to understand, regardless of who the applicant would be, that how this process would work, so please don't take it that way.
I do see a lot of their trailers all over the cities, so that's a good sign. They've got a lot of projects going up in the Twin Cities area, so they're a well-known developer.
It's good, it's good to know how that process would work, whether it's this project or any project, I guess is what I'm getting at, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Four D, City Hall redevelopment update, Mr. Kersky.
Mr. President and board members, so Enclave Companies, the developer out of Fargo, North Dakota, was actually looking at several sites in Shakopee, ran into some reluctant sellers, they had been looking for a partner and actually had talked to the Gawn Companies about Minneapolis, the Twin Cities, and landed in Shakopee. So they have developed a conceptual proposal for the former City Hall site, so we all know where that is. This is their proposal, they are including a full level of underground parking. They've heard from the community that parking is a big issue downtown, they want to make sure that even though in B3, parking is not required, that they will provide one space per bedroom in their project, so they will have adequate parking for both their retail space and for their tenants. So this would be a, this site here is an underground parking garage, they're also parking under a part of the building, so it's two levels of a parking garage. They would have a retail restaurant along Home Street, along with their entrance right on the corner with some amenities, and they would have bike parking, kind of screening along Second. A, at the second level, a fairly significant community space outdoors, also would have an interior club room, balconies around the building, because as you get above the historic buildings, there's some pretty decent views. And this is kind of just a rough sketch-up model of what the building would look like. So you can see here is the amenity for the residents and then this would be the space for the retail space and this would be their kind of main entrance on Home Street.
Is there no sidewalk on Second Avenue side?
There, Mr. President, there's sidewalk proposed on Second Avenue, yes. So you'll see a motion on the city council agenda setting a hearing August, they're proposing a TIF district because to do the underground parking, they'll have, actually have to demolish out here somewhere in the street, because you remember, City Hall's foundation is still there, because it's supporting both sides of the street, including the railway and the alley. They would basically demolish this whole area and do some soil nailing to hold up this side of the street and then pour new foundation walls for the basement to hold up the existing railway and the street. As part of that, they would redo all of Second Street along the train tracks from the Bills Taggery Building all the way to this corner and then all the way down Home Street to where H and R Block is, would be all new, streetscaping sidewalks, curb, gutter, and utilities, because there's some utility issues also in the street. They would pay the majority of the cost for a new concrete alley between this building and the buildings that are on First Avenue.
When you say they would pay, you mean that that would be part of the TIF, that they would be able to recoup from future taxes?
Mr. President, that's correct. So they would upfront all of that money. They haven't got into, we've done a preliminary analysis on the TIF, but they haven't done full construction evaluation yet because they were waiting for the public hearing to get set.
What's the density on this proposal?
This is eighty odd units, it's about a hundred and twenty-five units an acre.
It may have said that in here, Mars, but.
Yep, it's right down here.
Trust me, my eyesight wasn't the best.
The back page had the number, it's pretty small, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say that they, they too are doing a market study, but they found that in downtown, there has, in their take, there's a need for a few two bedrooms, so you'll notice on their floor plan, they do have the one bedroom and then I think there's some, they're calling them studios and alcoves, which I thought was interesting, the studios are a little smaller, so I guess there is some measurement for that. They, on the corners, they are doing, because these have the best views, they're doing some pretty large two bedrooms.
Questions of staff? Mr. Luce? Yeah, I really got to turn this way.
The retail is going to have parking on site, correct?
Mr. President and board members, yes.
Okay, now, you said they're going to have one parking place per unit?
What, one parking place per bedroom? So whatever their final unit count is, they think they can fit that in the building between the basement and the first floor.
Okay, and where is the retail parking going to be?
It'll be in the building, again, these are just, they just hired the Cunningham Group to start working on this, but they talked about it could be in this area here and this might end up being gated so that people can't get into the residential parking.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
After hours, would there be a possibility that would be open to the public for parking, being parking as everybody seems to believe and that it's such an issue that would the public be able to use that, say, after the retail faces closed?
Mr. President and board members, I think we're pretty early in the design process, so I think their ultimate goal is they're not required to do any parking in B3, I mean, they could tell the people, as all the other people downtown, go park in a city lot. So they've been trying to figure out how to maximize the amount of parking in this building and again, this is just preliminary conceptual design that Cunningham did and as they move forward, they'll be doing a lot more engineering work to try and maximize the amount of parking and seeing if there's any opportunity for public parking.
Go ahead, one more.
Just wanted to bring it up so that it's a possibility for public parking.
This kind of density, I would say, if there was no parking, I think there would be a problem, for sure.
Mr. President, I would agree with that, as did they.
Mr. Mars?
Yeah, no, this, this idea, this concept, this rough proposal, you know, I'd like to see it get further along. Obviously, if this impact, they're supplying their own parking, so, you know, the perception of a parking problem in our downtown is to a perception, but when you add an impact, but this impact comes with their own parking and it almost, you know, almost one, one point one units per bedroom. Although this, this, this concept of how we measure parking, per unit, per bedroom, you know, we used to have parking concepts of two point five per unit. What happened years ago is we had three-bedroom rental units and of course, if three college kids rented that, they all had three cars, you're over the parking there alone. Now the parking is getting more defined about per bedroom, right? So I think that's better. I do have a strong interest in the, the look, I know these are just concept drawings. I like the look of the Riverfront apartment, seems to fit in down there, I'd like something similar to that to get with the feel of our downtown, we put a lot of effort in, into history or the look of history and I think that would be important.
And Mr. President, board members, I will say Cunningham's a pretty big architect, they've done a lot of projects across the country, residential and looking through their portfolio, I think they will understand our community.
Ms. Jay, go ahead. I'd echo the thoughts on the downtown, kind of that historic vibe, and we talked about this on the other project that didn't go through, and I think we talked about the two levels being of some sort of, you know, brick and mortar type look, and so I'd hope to see that, too. I'd have some thoughts about storm sewer with that kind of a rooftop in there, and so I think those concepts would have to be looked at. I know a lot of the downtown area, we use that alley as the storm sewer, so I like the idea that we're going to finally finish that alley, but we may need to look a little farther, too. And as far as the parking issue, I really think our downtown businesses are going to want to take a look and kind of weigh whether they want the more customers or they want the parking and I also agree that there's a, it's a concept in people's mind that there's not enough parking, but you know, there's very few opportunities for a city to add parking and this would be one of them, so I think we need to concentrate on that when something comes available in the future, but to me, this looks like an exciting opportunity.
Ms. Mokel?
I think for me, this is a great project, because the one thing that we did talk about with the City Hall site is that there was already a basement, so there was that digging out for that underground parking. And although, you know, again, concept is that most of this would be for residents, I think if we could work something out that there was some parking involved for people who are maybe using retail or even if it's just the workers, that would be something to think about. And I, too, believe that parking is something that people are thinking is a problem and not really, because they want to get and park in front of wherever they go. And I think that concept is, if we're going to have a walkable downtown, we have to get away from that concept that we can be able to park right in front of where we want to go. I think, I've never been afraid to park aways when I'm downtown, even at night or the weekends, I just think that we have a very safe city in that, in that regard, so. But I do like the concepts, I do, I would also like it to match what is already downtown, that historic piece to it, not quite the modern look to it. And then, somebody brought up the roof, it would be interesting to find out if they would be interested in like maybe roof gardens at some point, if we're talking about water issues and those types of things, so it's something to think about as we think about concepts.
Mr. President, board members, I think one of the, from an urban planning standpoint, getting people living downtown in this number between these two projects will make the area safer. It's proven that if you have people living on multiple levels, they're going to look at the riverfront and if they see people hanging out, they're going to call the police. Downtown, if they hear something, if they're sitting on their porch, they're going to call the police. They tend to be great eyes on the street and so that's why I think you're seeing a comeback in these areas, because you've got a lot of people walking around and taking note and people don't like to be seen when there's crime.
When I first looked at this, I actually went back and started watching some tapes of our R4 discussions, which, if it's the same Mr. Cunningham, he was in attendance at them R4 discussions, where we talked specifically about the downtown area being higher than other areas, I think it was forty-four, if it had a transportation piece with it, it was, Mr. Saboda was discussing it. This is three times higher than what we envisioned during that process, so that's my first concern. My second concern is it's almost guaranteed to come back a hundred percent of all entities a TIF and we're adding to it by putting roof gardens and added amenities in this, you know, in the alleys and everything else, so, you know, I'm not going to say no yet, but them are my concerns, you're asking, so I'm conveying my concerns and when we're adding, we're adding quite a bit of population between Canterbury, the Riverfront, this project, and we have zero dollars for services, additional services, and that's always a concern, as, as the experts say, it's going to fall on somebody and I'm afraid we're going to make our existing affordable housing stock in Shakopee more unaffordable, so, just my comments. And I do think parking is going to be an issue in the future, I actually agree with Mr. Whiting on that point, it's really hard to add parking. Mr. Luce?
Yeah, to the parking issue, you know, if the numbers are correct here, they're going to have, they're going to have no negative impact on the parking because they're going to supply all their own parking with a little added because a few spaces for retail, which should help out. Before I forget, the part there that says easement in the little corner, that's just be-
that's just between the alley and the Second Avenue, is that an easement that is gonna stay there? I'm guessing that's an easement, um, for a thruway between the dress shop and the men's store?
Mr. President and board member, that is, um, an ancient easement, as the surveyor liked to call it, that dates back. It's a access point through that driveway to the alley that will remain.
I'm sure that those business owners would be happy to hear that. And back to the parking issue, um, you know, as far as where people park and that, it's not gonna be much more than a week or so with rhythm on the rails, and we'll see where everybody parks them. Because the last good one that I saw, they were parking on Fifth Street. So, that brings a lot of people downtown, but, you know, hopefully they can.
Mr. Mars?
Yeah, you know, uh, that's a great problem to have if you have an event in your community in downtown, and, uh, you gotta walk a little, little wa, ways to get there. That's a, you couldn't ask for a, a better problem than that. That means your community's doing well. But I still think, uh, this is a great opportunity, again, for our downtown, adding vitality. I was asking how much this was really worth again. Uh, I heard a number around sixteen million, uh, this development, and, uh, a City Hall site that didn't pay taxes for all those years was exempt. Granted, if we tiff it and we get some additional infrastructure, the alley fixed, which helps our stormwater, I think a very small price to pay in redevelopment, um, on a site here to, to, that matches our envisioned plan, it matches our survey from a year ago, increases the livability, walkability, and vitality of downtown in our community. Like to see more about this.
Item number five, reports.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Would it be possible with this one, I know we maybe aren't gonna see it with any of the others, but what would the ancillary benefits to the other businesses downtown, is there a way of calculating that? I know the chamber, when there's an event, they have a formula for calculating that. Is there a way to do it on a housing stock?
Mr. President, we'll ask. I think there should be. I mean, one of the things that attracted this particular developer is the brew halls to the other side, and that's where they were visiting, and they wanted to know why this big empty spot was sitting here. So, we can do some calculations and find out what typically these kind of people spend in the community.
Brew halls and bars next door are pretty much a guarantee of no DWIs.
You know, that was kind of my point, is we, all these businesses want parking, and they're all drinking establishments. I think, you know, we gotta think about that, too. Why are, why are people driving to these drinking establishments? But I'm getting off track, so.
On the same token, number five, reports. Any reports? None? Motion to adjourn would be in order, Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, adjourned till Wednesday, August eighth, at seven PM for the EDA.
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth, I believe it was?
Yes.
I apologize. July seventeenth.
You'd like to modify your motion? Modify your motion, Mr. Mars, or would somebody, or would you like to?
I would modify my own motion for July seventeenth.
Second by Miss Mokel. Mars made the motion, Mokel seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Alright.
Short break?
Okay, uh, motion?
For a short recess?
Second, and apparently there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion stands. We'll stand and recess for a few minutes. Thank you. We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for July third, two thousand and eighteen. We are on ten A1, award a contract for park system plan to Confluence. Michael?
Mayor and council, this is a follow-up. You appointed a committee of sixteen people, and thanks to Councilmember Lehman and Whiting for sitting in on that meeting. But this is, uh, an award of a contract to Confluence. This is kind of their outline. It's a pretty big job. They're gonna be doing a complete analysis, including economic analysis, of the existing park system and also future improvements. Just to give you an idea, they've had a lot of experience in other cities around here. You can see a lot of, City of Dinan was one of the, uh, adjacent cities they mentioned. Um, they were one of their references. They were very pleased with their overall plan and outreach. Uh, they just are doing Duluce Traverse Mini Master Plan, which is a huge bike trail system. So they're pretty deep, um, as an organization, and I think the group was pretty impressed overall with their qualifications and their presentation. They took a lot of the kind of big ideas out of the comprehensive plan workshops and kind of rolled it into their presentation. And I'll leave it to the two council members to make any additional comments.
Okay, questions? Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, I'll reiterate, um, there, we had two presentations at the, uh, at the advisory committee meeting. Uh, both were good, but Confluence stood out to the members and, uh, were, uh, approved overwhelmingly. So I would, you know, I'll, I'll actually offer, uh, accept the Park System Advisory Committee's recommendation to award the planning project to Confluence.
Second? I'll second, and I'll speak to it, Mayor.
And I have a motion and a second by Councilor Lehman. Um, further discussion? Councilor Lehman?
Just to follow up on Councilor Whiting's comments, um, as he stated, both of the top-ranking applicants were both qualified, and both brought very good proposals to the table. Um, I think that the difference really was, uh, came down to what, two or three small, um, well, not so small when you're doing a total park, uh, evaluation. But, uh, the one we're recommending, and I do agree with this recommendation, had a, had a particular focus on, you know, what you're charging for various fees for various services, um, and they were a little more in, I guess, in detail. So, uh, nothing against either one. They were both very high-qualified outfits, and, uh, I back the recommendation completely.
Further discussion? Uh, Councilor Mokel?
I just wanna say thank you to Councilor Lehman and Whiting for sitting on this committee, 'cause I think it is important as we move forward, and what we're, wrap our arms around what we have going and what we, we need to get going in the city. So, thank you.
Councilor Whiting?
A little follow-up on that. Uh, there is representation from, uh, the Bike Advisory Committee, the Park and Rec Committee, downtown businesses, uh, um, Planning Committee, uh, Parks and Recs. So, uh, I'm sure I'm missing one or two, but, uh, well-represented and, uh, into all depths of, uh, what this project is, is, uh, needed for.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
And I, I think it's fair to say that the scope of, of this undertaking is, shouldn't be minimized. It's, it's, uh, it's much broader than maybe some might recognize, and it's probably gonna take some time. But that's good, you know?
No, I think, we, we sat here in a workshop and discussed this pause and, you know, cost analysis, what's getting used, what's not anymore. If we're gonna invest dollars, and where's the best place for that? And, you know, park, parks and park uses have changed, um, and we need to, we need to continue to look at that. And I, I was pretty impressed with Confluence's, uh, depth. I've actually been in a couple of those, uh, the parks that, in the communities that they earn, and, uh, some of this stuff looks pretty, pretty nice, and actively used, whether it's passive or, um, you know, from the council.
We, we know that, and we discussed this at the, uh, meeting, we know that Shakopee is one of the highest, we have the highest dollars going into the parks of anybody in the state. And we, we believe that we can do the same for less. But I, I think one of the really neat things that came out of the conversation with both of the applicants and the group at large was, you know, how do you prepare for what you don't really know? And, and during that discussion, it was, you know, you've got some uses now, and I'll use Topol Park as an example. There's the green space in Topol Park, um, or even the soccer complex, for that matter, would fit that same template, to where what you currently have there now is able to be utilized by a lot of different things in the future, and sometimes they are now. And, you know, that kind of a mindset going into this is, is a very good mindset to have, because not only do you diversify yourself, uh, for whatever changes might happen, society changes in recreation, but, uh, you, you, you actually can do it at a lower cost, so.
And, and, you know, Councilor, uh, Lewis?
Yeah, you were saying it's gonna take some time. According to their paperwork, they're looking at six to nine months to complete their process. Um, just wondering if we're gonna have any updates between, uh, then and the end of their, their, uh, process, because, pardon?
Mokel?
Mayor and council, they'll, um, be working with the sixteen committee members, so your two council representatives can report back, but we have plans as part of their contract to come back at various touchpoints along the way to report some of their findings, 'cause they're gonna be doing a fifteen-year capital improvement plan as one of their analyses. They're also gonna be looking at fees, and they're also gonna be looking at usage, and there's a pretty big citizen engagement portion of this project. So I think you'll be hearing a lot about this, as Councilmember Lehman said, that this is probably one of the most in-depth processes undertaken in the city for a specific subject. So, I mean, other cities kind of look at a few issues. They're gonna look actually at everything, so that when they're done, you'll have kind of a roadmap, at least for the next five years, for sure, but hopefully for the next fifteen, on what we want and have as a park system.
And Mayor, it'll, it'll, as Mr. Whiting can speak to, it, it's gonna include your, not only your capital outlay, but your, your capital cost for maintenance, capital cost for replacements, um, all of the pieces that we use in other areas, uh, whether we use it in sewer and stormwater and, and these type of roads and stuff, we're gonna apply that same template to, uh, parks.
Good. Others? Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, the fee analysis, I think, is going to be the real telling story there. Are we charging enough or are we charging too much in some areas?
Counselor Whiting?
You know, I think, and beyond that, would be what the future uses and what the future might hold for certain things we may be planning on investing in, but there may not be a future in that project, or sport, or whatever. So it's kind of a broad scope, so I look forward to seeing some of the results.
Motion on the table and a second?
I think it's all important, actually. I don't think one thing stands out more than another at this point. It may throughout the process, but not yet.
Okay, good. Motion on the table, second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Moving ahead then to 10A3, set a public hearing for redevelopment district for the former City Hall site. Michael, welcome back.
I think this...
10A2.
This is the...
10A2, I apologize.
Mayor and council, this is setting a public hearing for the site we discussed at the last EDA meeting for the soil remediation district at South Bridge. So this will set the public hearing where you'll see, similar to tonight, a spreadsheet and analysis from Springstead on what the economics look like.
Counselor Lehman?
Offer resolution R.218-081, set in a public hearing for...when? When's this public hearing? August 21st?
August 21st.
He said what he said.
I was looking to see if that was a Tuesday. All right, August 21st.
I have a motion.
Second.
Counselor Mokel, second. Discussion. I have a question of staff.
Yes, sir.
So, in the regard to this site, over the last nine months, it seems like some additional dirt has shown up on this site or this area. I know there was a site across the way that, next to a bank, daycare or something, that had a big pile of dirt. That's no longer there. Are they moving dirt around or contaminated dirt? What?
Mayor and council, that's probably fill dirt because one of the issues that they're going to have is they're going to have to remove, similar to what we have to do on the River Bluff site, they're going to have to remove a lot of that material because it can't support weight. That's one of the reasons. If you remember, I think it was Willie McCoy's actually was in for a permit and had to pull and cancel their permit because the soils could not support the weight of that restaurant. So they've done a...the applicant's done a full engineering analysis. So varying, depending on what portion of the site, they're going to have to remove a lot of fill. This is a little unusual TIF district, and it's a twenty-year TIF district, but unlike redevelopment districts or some of the other ones you've seen where you have a five-year window, they can make those investments over the twenty years. So it's...there are not very many of them done statewide. So we've been working with Springstead and Ms. Eddington on how to make sure that we're looking at the best model.
Well, this is my question. And it just looked like I'm very familiar with the site and this is coming up for a TIF district, and then all of a sudden there's some new dirt that appeared and there's no hole. Well, that's all. Well...
No, Mayor and council, the contamination there is actually in the ground. It's a former glass and garbage landfill, so that'll have to come out and they'll have to be screening and putting in new structural fill.
Counselor?
Do we know the size of the site?
Mayor and council, it's basically the, if you remember from the last presentation, it's the entire site that sits between Marcus Theaters and the Home Depot. So it's that entire site. And we need that entire site because if you just had the Willie McCoy's, you'd never be able to pay that TIF note back to the developers. So it will include that entire...
Area.
I think it's about fourteen or fifteen acre site.
Um, well...
I call it the missing link site. So if you go out there, you can't figure out how to get from Home Depot to the movie theater.
Motion on the table, further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 10A3, to set a public hearing for redevelopment district for the former City Hall site. Michael?
Mayor and council, this is to set a public hearing, again, the same day as the one for South Bridge in August, to look at the financial numbers for a redevelopment of the City Hall site. And again, it would be paying for the public infrastructure necessary around it and removal of the old foundation walls for the City Hall and the bedrock there to create that underground parking garage and also pay for the public improvements.
Questions of staff? If not, Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion approving resolution number R.2018-080 to...okay, the creation of a development TIF district for the formal site of City Hall in downtown Shakopee to set the public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that wasn't included in that resolution, so.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Further discussion? This will be on August 21st. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving ahead then, 10B1, conduct of Counselor Luce. Mr. Burkett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I believe that the resolution fairly clearly lays out the situation. I can speak to it in maybe somewhat more layman's terms. But if you read the resolution, I think that we have a little bit of concern that Counselor Luce appears to be attempting to raise money for a project that is unapproved at this point in time, so.
Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, this was a...we had discussed our park planning process and we approved the procedure for moving forward. And every project in the parks was kind of put on hold until we had an idea. There's a few that are still floating out there. And, you know, even the ones that are still talked about are not at a stage to be moved forward because they haven't gone through the proper process. When the inclusive playground was first brought forward, school board member Angela Tucker and myself brought it to Jamie Polly, the city staff, brought it before the park board, had it approved by everybody, brought it before the city council, and then before any funds were ever even attempted to be raised. There's certain steps in a process and they were just not followed. And this was brought before one of our civic groups and presented as a fundraising opportunity. I'm just surprised...it just surprised me that it ever even went that far.
Counselor Luce?
I see a need to expand that playground. I've done some preliminary work to see if there's interest in the community to fund it again because, you know, it's going to take a lot of civic input as far as dollars like it did the last time. I have not raised any money. I have asked for input. I have asked people if they could give me a dollar amount that they'd be interested in. And I figured if I got enough interest, I would bring it forward and see if the group here would go along with it. There is a video of my presentation to the group that's out there, and in no way did I state that this was a city sanctioned deal. I'm just looking for interest. The reason I spoke with the group is because they are a 501(c)(3) and it would be needed to use them for a bank for the funds. And hopefully they would be part of it like they were the last time. So I don't see any misrepresentation at all here. I see a very big need. We've got something that's working better than expected by leaps and bounds. It's beneficial to society as a whole in amounts that the therapists that I've spoken to can't even tell us because you get children going up there and doing basic play, which would be therapy at the hospital. And they don't know they're doing therapy. They're getting a better workout than they would at the hospital, and they're enjoying themselves. So I have looked into possibly adding adult workout section because there's...the people that make the equipment for the inclusive playground also make adult stretching stations that the walkers along the bike path and the walk path there could use and would be beneficial to them. It'd be better than pulling a muscle while they're...you know, it'd be nice if I don't get interrupted every time I'm speaking, so.
You know, no one's interrupting you?
No, they're trying. And usually it happens, so. You know, just because I'm trying to find interest, that doesn't mean I'm overstepping my bounds. You know, I'm doing what I think everybody here should do, is try and benefit the city. We...this playground is paying many benefits to the city as a whole and ancillary benefits to businesses that people stop at when they come here. I've had reports of people coming from a hundred miles just to be at that playground because it is state-of-the-art. So I think we should be marketing that better than we are, which I think is a downfall on the city's part. But, you know, take your shots.
Counselor Mokel?
I don't think that we could say that your intentions aren't good. I think the piece is, is that we have a process within the city that we have these projects come forward. And you also stated that you never said you were raising money on behalf of the city, but you also never said you weren't there as on a personal mission. You were represented as a council member. And I think that's just a good reminder for...
Where are you speaking at?
Now you're interrupting me. And so the thing is, is that we all have to keep in mind that when we're out in public, we don't get to take our council member hat off because that's not how the citizens see us. We are always representing the city unless we state otherwise. And so that was the other piece that you didn't ever say that you weren't in representing the city and that this was a personal project. But, and again, there is still a process to how these things go forward. And we have other projects that are in the works and we're trying to raise money for and that have been approved by the council. And those projects are what we should be, you know, talking about in the public realm.
Do I get to ask a question? What were you referring to where I was promoting this as a city deal?
I didn't say that you did. I said you also didn't say you weren't raising money. You didn't make the differentiation that you were there. Your name on the agenda was as a council member, and that's how the group saw you, as a council member. And you're telling people that you've already raised fifty thousand dollars. How are you raising money if you're not representing somebody? Because you never said how you were raising it.
Have you seen the tape?
I have.
Okay. I didn't state that I raised that much. I have people guaranteeing that if this goes forward, they will donate that much.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor and council, I...to me, when I read this, and I did watch the tape, the first thing that came to my mind is, do we want to add on to this brand-new park that really hasn't even been broken yet? The second question I asked myself is, if it's really, really successful, should it be...should any addition of this type be in a separate location to serve another area of town? I started asking myself all the questions that we're working on in the park master planning process. And that's kind of what I first thought of. There's, you know, we can all talk about bad process. And I'll tell you, when I first got an email on Thursday, I noticed that the email went out to four council members instead of five, which to me is a breakdown in our process of everybody getting the same information and being transparent about it. So I...watching the tape, I totally understand where Counselor Mokel's coming from, where the agenda said, you know, this is a council member. I, myself, have been put in that position before. And, you know, my first sentence is, I'm here on behalf of myself, not representing the city or the council in any capacity, just so we're clear on that. And then I continue. So I understand your point there. I also understand that it wasn't a council member that put their name on that agenda. It was somebody else's doing, right or wrong or whatever. But in this case, it's two people that possibly made mistakes. I think the first draft of this resolution makes some inferences that aren't necessarily fact-based. I did sit down with Mr. Reynolds and talk to him Thursday when I got this email. And I asked if he spoke with Mr. Luce or with the Lions. He said no. So I did watch the tape and it looks like there's a lot of pledges possibly out there for a project that may not be timed very well and may not be in the right location. And that's just my opinion. This body would have to make them determinations. So I think there's room for improvement all the way around the block, to be honest with you. And if...I will say one last thing, Mayor.
Counselor?
If we decide to go down the road of trying to get the public through donations for a park of this style, wherever it may be, if that decision is made, I would say that the record reflects that Counselor Luce is very good at gaining donations for this type of cause. So that's my ten cents.
Thank you. Counselor Luce?
As far as making a secondary location, I gave that some thought in talking to other people better informed. The...there is advanced equipment that would better fit being at this location because the children can advance to the next step. Special needs children need to be challenged. All children need to be challenged. And if you do the advanced equipment, they have a reason for being there. They want to do what the average child can do. And with this advanced equipment, they will be able to be better able to do it if they're driven enough. You know, did I overstep? I don't know. I don't think I did. I'm looking for interest. If I come here with three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in pledges, are you going to say no to a playground? It's not going to cost the city a dime.
Well, I think, Counselor, this hasn't been vetted in any way. The...we talk about the playground. No one is denying the playground is hugely successful. It's the...it's tremendously successful. However, a lot of our parks and playgrounds are very successful. They get used. We have a lot of needs and a lot of wants. Our budget for parks is very high. We're taking a pause. We all agreed in a consensus way to pause a couple months ago on activity. I don't...I don't see that you had the authority to go solicit funds on behalf of a city park. It wasn't, you know, did you talk with staff? Did you park with...
I'm not allowed to talk to staff.
Or go through the Park and Rec Commission? You know, you are aware that we are taking a pause. We just approved a...that everybody like a consultant to help us with that. You're promoting a project that doesn't exist. I did see an email that was between you and Angela Tucker, who was one of the main lead points the last time, and she rightfully said you should contact city staff about this before you went to the Lions.
No, no, no. The email you're referring to is the Channel Five coming out here on the 12th to do their barbecue at the playground.
I...I think you, in a way, put the city at risk. And it's been...
How did I put the city at risk with Channel Five coming out here to...
We're not talking about Channel Five.
Well, you just started to talk about it with an email.
Okay. I...I think there doesn't seem to be any rules or structure to what you do, you know? And I just...no one's denying the playground is very successful. And maybe there'll be a time and a place where that can be expanded. Can't we go through this pause? There's other needs as well. You know, we have a generous community and they donate well in our community and we're thankful for that. But certainly just do this out on your own without any vetting, I think, is improper. We talked about the process. So you had no contact with anybody in regard to this. You just did it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I spoke to people that I have talked to before to see if there's interest.
Counselor Whiting?
Offer resolution R.2018-078, resolving that Counselor Luce has no authority to raise funds on behalf of the city. has no authority to raise funds on behalf of the city of Shakopee and has no authority to speak on behalf of the city.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Councilor Lehman, or Councilor Luce?
As to the, uh, barbecue on the twelfth, I would really, uh, be interested in an update from Nathan since I had to turn it all over to him as to the planning of it with Channel Five.
We can discuss that when we're done here, then. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions on this resolution. The first whereas clause says that continues to misrepresent the city's official position on matters can, continuing to overstep, uh, oh wait, that's second whereas, I guess. He addressed the Lions Club in his capacity as a Shakopee city council member. He actually did not do that.
Didn't not do that either.
Well, he, he was put on the agenda by the Lions, um, as a council member, which was not his fault.
I never saw the agenda.
But I understand that he didn't say, "I'm not here representing them." So I, I, you know, and it goes on to say, you know, fraudulent, possibly fraudulent of collecting money toward non-existing projects and stuff like this.
Is that fraudulent, excuse me, fraudulent similar to selling gift cards that aren't being able to be redeemed?
Talking about this resolution.
Well, I'm just, you know, if you're gonna throw mud, I'm gonna throw it back.
All right, I see that.
You're just being a child. Call the question.
Second.
Um, motion on the table, second's been called. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
What do you think?
I, I understand where everybody's at. I just don't agree with the severity of it. I, I, I think it was.
So you're enabling it.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Luce, did you vote in the negative or are you gonna abstain because this resolution affects you?
I'll abstain like a person should do if it affects them.
Okay, that's why, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question.
Very few on this board do that.
Motion passes three to one with one abstention. Thank you very much. Eleven A, the city bill list is, uh, in front of us for our review. Um, liaison administration report, Councilor Lehman?
I have no liaison report.
All right. I met with the Shakopee Minnewakansoo community about possible collaboration and partnership on a fire station. Very early discussions. There is no update. The workshop, of course, we had on Invision Shakopee and I did attend the opening house, open house on the Invision Shakopee. And, uh, it's getting a, a pretty good positive play. And, uh, on that, I encourage all residents to go online, make your further comments, read. There's an executive, uh, uh, summary that's a little lighter than the four hundred pages. Great document, in progress, so. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you. On the twenty-seventh, I had the MVTA and we went through our, uh, process of looking at our, uh, financials for the year. And I have passed them along to Darren. You'll find them in your box if, for your perusal. That's about it.
Councilor Mokel?
I did not have any this week.
Thank you. Administration report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to quickly recognize Heidi Emerson, who is our deputy city clerk, works for Lori. Was, uh, recently recognized as a Minnesota certified municipal clerk. It's a designation that takes a lot of hard work to get, about a hundred and twenty hours of education and proving that you understand the ins and the outs of being a clerk. So now we have two. So congratulations to Heidi on that. Um, I'd also like to say congratulations to the folks that work out at Sand Venture on a really successful fiftieth anniversary party on Saturday. Uh, I wasn't able to make it myself, but I saw some pictures and I heard some really great stories about cars lined up quite a ways to, to get into there, so.
Another park that has a parking problem that's very popular, that's good.
And then, uh, finally, just wanted to wish everybody a happy fourth and be safe.
We get an update on the barbecue?
Uh, yes, sir. Can I give that to you offline?
I think there's like a forty.
I think we could use the publicity. I mean, if you wanna do it now, uh.
Can I, can I speak to you offline? And, and I have a reason for not wanting to discuss it right now and I'll explain that.
I just want everybody to know that I won a contest with Channel Five. They were gonna do a party for fifty in my backyard. I suggested we do it at the playground because that's what I wrote the essay on that won the contest. So, um, according to Mr. Reynolds, being that it was a city park, I had to turn it over to city staff. And Nathan's supposedly running the, uh, show now, so.
Process worked. Councilor Whiting?
I'll move to adjourn to July seventeenth at seven PM.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Happy birthday, America. Have a safe, uh, holiday. Councilor Lehman?
You skipped over item number twelve.
I am, I'm, I'm sorry. Item number twelve, before we, uh, other business.
I have no other business.
Oh, that's right, I have no other business.
I have a mo-. Motion on the table and a second. Uh, everybody have a safe, happy holiday. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned at nine fourteen.